I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we return, that we come out of executive session.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Harden. Any discussion? Call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. We're now back in session. Item...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to ask you...
Mr. Taveras.
May I ask the esteemed attorneys a question?
Is it regarding...
Are we at that point yet?
Is it regarding what we were discussing? Okay.
This is to any of our attorneys. Is there anything pending that might affect our budget?
No.
No, I'm not aware of anything, Mr. Taveras.
Thank you.
You have certain funds in your budget to pay certain claims that may arise. You know, you have pending workers' comp claims. You have certain pending liability claims, but nothing that we feel you should be concerned about, isn't overly concerned about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.1.1, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, regarding 6.1.1, an ordinance amending 5-61 through 5-67 of the town code, and this is regarding the Stratford Housing Partnership, I move that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
I'll entertain a second to that. Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Just for clarity, this is to send to ordinance as we did briefly start discussing this in the last council, but with the new council coming on, it has to start again from the council. So we'll be going through this in its entirety and detail in ordinance where we work on this type of stuff. So any other further discussion on this? Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a note for the public that three significant changes to the ordinance. One is in, consistent with other committee appointments, this partnership will be under the purview of the mayor, not the town council. Two other changes is the partnership had four members of the local business community, and they're, excuse me, they're moving it down to one, or two. They're moving it from four to two. It also had two members at large, which is just at-large members of the public, moving that from four to two. As the mayor indicated, by having four members of the public, two at large, two with business, and five town employees, that nine should give us enough public presence and a quorum so that we can get this committee reinstituted.
So everything's attached in the agenda, the redlined items, as Mr. Khan just stated, and when we go to ordinance, that's when we work on all of this, and anything could be changed and discussed at that time with public comment. Any other questions? Hearing none. I'll call this to a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine and zero. Item 6.2.1.
Mr. Chairman, I move regarding the res... I move to approve the resolution regarding Fairfield County Community Foundation.
I have a motion on the table. I have a second, Mr. Harden. Any discussion on this as a resolution? Ms. Khan.
I had a question regarding, how many participants do we think will be able to engage in this program? And also a thank you to Community Services for once again earning the town a grant for public services.
Is anybody from Tammy here? Yes.
So I am ill-prepared, and I don't have that number off the... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ill-prepared. I do not have that number off the top of my head, but I will be happy to get back to you with that number. So it's, I want to say fifteen, but I don't want to speak in error to you, to your question. Sorry, my apologies.
Madam Mayor, you have a question?
Tammy, before you leave, how long has this program been going on?
The Summer Soiree program has been going on for, oh, boy, a long time. So I would, you know, many, many years. And we've been fortunate in the past number of years to get funding from the Fairfield County Foundation, which really allows children to come to that program for the full, the full six weeks, which is terrific.
Which is wonderful, and Ty does an amazing job with it. Yes, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Tammy, please. May I address?
You may.
It's my first night, so could you please give me just a, I tried to look through the paperwork to see if there was a synopsis of exactly what does this entail? Is this a reading program for, and what are the ages of the children?
Sure. So this is a program for children in kindergarten through grade six, and also we take a few children that are older in grade seven and eight to serve as leaders. So for the elementary children, it's a, it's a full-day summer program for six weeks. They're there typically from nine to three. So it's some of what you would think of as your traditional summer activities, playground, field trips, opportunities to go to museums, go to the, go swimming. And then also we build in everyday time for academic support, because during the summer, that's a time when children can actually slide back in academics. So we build in time to work on packets, reading stories, and then really focus on some of the other things that come in, such as Legos, science programs. So a lot of times it's what I call stealth learning. So it's so much fun, you don't even realize you're getting a lesson.
Anything with children, maybe some learning disabilities, reading disabilities?
Well, the program is open to all children, so certainly we would do what we could to support all children at the program, but, you know, we don't necessarily have special education services in place.
It's a great program. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. All right, any other further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 6.2.2, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move for supporting the participation in the Sustainable Connecticut Municipal Certification Program.
Motion's on the table. I'll entertain a second by Ms. Dantcho. Any discussion on this? Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Chair. It's a large packet, very much... Oh, I think I might be on the wrong one, actually. Sustainable Connecticut. Yeah. No questions on this motion, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no other questions, I'll entertain, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 6.2.3, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dantcho.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the resolution regarding policy and environmental change for chronic disease prevention.
Motion's on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. 6.2.4, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Harden.
This is a resolution regarding the Stratford-Trumbull-Monroe Medical Reserve Corps. Whereas the Stratford Health Department houses a Stratford-Trumbull-Monroe Medical Corps unit and registered in good standing, desires to provide funding in the amount not to exceed $7,500 to the Stratford Health Department in exchange for the Stratford Health Department agreeing, among things, to undertake the activities indicated in their capacity, building, application, or oversight of such activities, provided certain information. Whereas it's desired by both the public interests and the town of Stratford to execute a grant agreement with the National Association of County and City Health Officials among $7,500 connected with this program.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Do I have a second on that? Seconded by Mr. Perillo. Any further discussion on the item? Ms. Dantcho.
I'd just like to take a moment to, once again, congratulate Andrea on getting these two grants for our town. Thank you for everything you've done. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Dantcho. Any further discussion? Nope, hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 6.2.5, I'll entertain a motion for this. Mr. Harden. Motion's on the table. Seconded by Ms. Dantcho. Any conversation on this? Actually, Mr. Folda, if you'd like to come on up to the mic and just give us a quick little, quick little overview of what this covers for you guys.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Matthew Folda. I'm the Executive Director for the Connecticut Metropolitan Council Governments. We submitted this grant application to Office of Policy and Management for continuation and implementation of a regional electronic content management system hosted by MetroCog to be utilized by the entire region, including Stratford. What this will do is creates a cloud service backup of electronic documents, as well as gives the public access to documents that the town wants them to be accessible to. So they can have access to public health records, other assessors' information, zoning information, zoning, those types of things can all be made accessible to the public via online public portals. It also gives the town a secondary backup for all and digitization of current and historic documents.
That's great. Any questions for Mr. Folda? Mr. Taveras?
Yes, thank you, sir. When would this be implemented? About how long would it take?
Well, the MetroCog Board, actually, in May of 2019 approved the startup of this project, so we already currently are underway. We're working with the Town of Monroe right now on a contract management application, and I had discussions with the Planning and Zoning Director this week of Stratford to start looking at digitizing and creating electronic documents for some of the zoning referrals and zoning pieces that come in and out, as well as talked with the Conservation Department about doing the same with some of the wetlands permitting to start with, and then hopefully build it out from there.
We look forward to that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Folda? Ms. Khan.
Hi, Matthew.
How are you?
Good. Kind of an open question, as much as can be shared tonight. Reading the document, maybe $350,000 upfront to build the infrastructure for the project, and costs may exceed depending, but there's a huge benefit in terms of public access, in terms of efficiencies, economies of scale and whatnot. What is the ROI? Can we, do you have an estimate on what, so Stratford may benefit higher than, say, Eastern, because we may have more documents to go on?
Yeah, so one of the reasons that I like this solution, that we went with it, is that it's very scalable as to however the town or city decides to use it is really what drives the cost. The per, the per-annual licensing fees are relatively low, but you do pay by the user. So like if a town staff would have a user ID, that would be paid for annually. That allows them to do certain functionalities within the databases that, like, say, the public obviously would not have access to. So it really is scalable from doing it just to store documents to having it open to the public. The Town of Monroe is using it potentially to do an online permitting system with it. So it's basically scalable across a number of different processes a town would like to engender with this program if they want to, and it's also not required to. And just to your point of the $350,000, that was our grant request. What that will cover is two additional years of funding for the entire region, so that will be at no cost to the Town of Stratford for two additional years. It also has some additional money for our preferred vendor in there to, for technical support and programmatic management on their end to help us kind of build out some of these processes for the towns. And thirdly, there's money in there to do historic scanning and digitization of documents. So we put $200,000 within the grant, because we, talking with municipalities, one of the biggest things is the stockpile of filing cabinets that every municipality has that takes up space in town halls, that reduces office sizes. So we wanted to put some money in there to start that process, hopefully hire a single contractor to come in, do the scanning, so it's indexed correctly, so the documents are searchable, but also gets the paper documents out of town halls as much as we possibly can.
Thank you, Mr. Folda.
Sure.
I think we're all set.
Great, thank you very much.
So I'll entertain, excuse me, we've already made the motion. We'll call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 6.2.6, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move the resolution authorizing the mayor to create a 2020 Complete Count Committee to partner with the U.S. Census Bureau to ensure that every resident in the Town of Stratford is counted in the 2020 census.
I'll entertain, excuse me, do I have a second, Mr. Harden?
Seconded by Dave Harden.
And under discussion, if Chief of Staff Downs could come up and give us a brief summary of this?
Sure. Good evening, councilors. Every community in the, in the state of Connecticut is being asked to create one of these Complete Count Committees, and essentially the Complete Count Committee is, has, sorry, can you hear me a little bit better? Now I want to just take this, go Donahue style. Okay, better? All right, great. So every community in the state is being asked to create one of these Complete Count Committees, and the goal of the Complete Count Committee is to ensure that traditionally difficult account populations get a better count result in their communities. In Stratford, we have four census districts that have projected by the U.S. Census to have north of 20% non-respondent to the census. So our two goals are really to, one, increase awareness, not only of the census, but to stress the fact that it's easy, it's secure, and it's important, because the census figures are used to calculate legislative redistricting on the local, state, and federal level. It affects grant rates and funding to the state and to the municipalities, and it's also to promote the jobs that are available through the U.S. Census. So that's the goal of the committee, and we will be forming to bring cross-sections of the town together, clergy, education, government, to come up with a plan to increase Stratford's response to the census.
Any questions for Mr. Downs? Ms. Schick.
In regards to the committee that will be formed, how many people are required to sit on the committee?
There's no requirement. We're probably going to have about 20 to 25 people total.
Okay, and then how would we ensure that the representation of different areas throughout the town, throughout all of the districts, will we ensure that we'll have at least two people, three people per district to sit on the committee?
There really isn't a requirement to have, I mean, per council district?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? There is no requirement to have, have it done per council district. The real focus is on the communities and getting people out who traditionally may either be averse to answering the census, or who have been traditionally difficult to reach.
So what would be the community outreach approach that we would use to try and engage?
That's what this committee's purpose will be to determine.
But in order to actually attract people to the committee?
We've already got a projected list of about half of those people, and so we're just going through the process. If you have people that you think are, you know, potential ads, you know, happy to hear about it.
So there's already people selected to sit?
There's already some projected people to sit on it, yes.
Oh, okay. And if they, if we know people that are interested, it's to be directed to you?
Yes.
What's the deadline?
There is no deadline, but I would probably prefer to hear from them before the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harden, did you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I was just going to state that I had an opportunity to attend the Census Information and Training Program last year here at City Hall along with some other fellow council people, and it was very informational about how to target people, how to, you know, what information to give people so they don't feel like they're being targeted for certain, you know, information, personal information. And so they had a lot of educational tools, and one was just informing, you know, the person, having a conversation about what it is that they do and why this information is so helpful. And, you know, I want to get involved in it because the numbers showed that some of the people in my district did not do this. Some of the numbers that the Census Bureau had, so that employed me to want to do it, you know, and I think that it's a great step in the right direction. So I employed people who want to get involved in it.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Mr. Taveras?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to pair it with Mr. Harden just said, I think it's imperative that we make sure that this committee has some diversity, given today's climate, making sure that there are some folks won't react out of fear and not be counted. And we look at the numbers of those, just a single person not being counted, is quite significant. Where and when would this committee meet?
The committee's going to probably meet once a month before the U.S. Census takes place in April, but there are also going to be subcommittees from the committee that will break down according to those disciplines that I described, clergy, education, business. And I can assure you, diversity in that committee is a high priority.
So when, I mean, like, so would that be posted, or that hasn't been established yet?
It hasn't been established yet.
Thank you.
We're just creating it really tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. Okay, all in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Thank you, sir. Item 7.1 on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Perillo.
To refer this project to the planning and commission, the planning commission for review.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Seconded from Mr. Harden. Any discussion on this? Okay, just for clarity, we're referring, council's referring this per the 8-24G for the planning commission to take it up and then either make a favorable or non-favorable recommendation back to the town council. This is purely just moving it to the planning commission. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 7.2.1.1.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, regarding the beautification committee, I move that the beautification committee be and is hereby established, and the following be and are hereby appointed to serve on said committee for the 2019-2021 session. Myself as council member, and electoral members will be Jen Riley Young, Christine Griffin, Patricia Ritchie, Donna Caserta, Rita Sakia, Lisa McGarron, Patricia Keys, and Janice QB.
Do I have a second on that? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. First statement, per the charter, the town council chair is allowed to name the chairs or co-chairs. We'll name Christine Griffin and Donna Caserta as co-chairs, as they currently are today.
Thank you.
Item 7.2.1.2.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that the Board of Education lay us on committee B and is hereby established, and the following be and are hereby appointed to serve on said committee for the 2019-2021 session. Council members, myself, Greg Khan, Bill Perillo, Laura Dantcho, and Board of Education members, Ellison Dalbany, Amy Wiltse, and Karen Rodea.
Do I have a second on that? Seconded by Ms. Dantcho. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 7.2.1.3, Building Needs. Ah, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. The chairman of this committee will be Bill O'Brien. Item 7.2.1.3, Building Needs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to make a motion that a Building Needs Committee be and is hereby established, and the following be and are hereby appointed to serve on said committee for the 2019-21 session. Council members, Caitlin Schake, myself, Ken Poison, and Jim Connor, and electorate members, Alan Llewellyn, Linda Manos, Daniel Semft, Bob DiLorenzo, Len Petroselli, Lam Nguyen, and Ron Ticky.
Do I have a second on that? Seconded by Dave Harden. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Chairman of the committee shall be Councilman Poison. Item 7.2.1.4, Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that an ordinance committee be and is hereby established, and the following be and are hereby appointed to serve on said committee for the 2019-2021 session. Councilors Chris Pia, Counselor Caitlin Schake, Counselor Paul Taveras, Counselor Dave Harden, Counselor Greg Khan, Counselor Ken Poison, Counselor Bill Perillo, Counselor Jim Connor, Counselor Bill O'Brien, and myself, Laura Dantcho.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Dave Harden. Any discussion on this? Ordinance is the entire council, so we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Chairperson, chairwoman will be Laura Dantcho. Item 7.2.1.5, Public Safety Committee. Mr. Perillo.
Yes, I'd like to make a move that Public Safety Committee is established, consisting of Councilmen Greg Khan, Bill Perillo, myself, Laura Dantcho, and electorate members Christopher Soucy, Paul Aurelia, James Wiltse, and James Duffy.
I have a second on that. Seconded by Mr. Harden. Any discussion? Bill?
Oh, yeah, I must want to add the amendment. I would like to have Paul Taveras on the committee also.
So a motion to amend, to add Mr. Councilman Taveras.
I'll second.
Do I have a second to that? Seconded by Ms. Dantcho. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Mr. O'Brien. On the amendment.
Is Greg Khan, are you remaining also?
He is.
Yes.
We're just adding Mr. Taveras.
Okay.
So we're, we're going to vote on the amendment to add Mr. Taveras, and then we'll vote on the original. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. And now we're going to vote on the total committee, which was now added Mr. Taveras. So all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Mr. Taveras has been added, along with the council members listed. The chairman of the committee shall be Mr. Perillo, as currently. Item 7.2.1.6, Public Works. Mr. Poison.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to make a motion out of Public Works Committee B and is hereby established, and the following be and are hereby appointed to serve on said committee for the 2019-21 session. Council members, Greg Khan, Dave Harden, myself, Ken Poison, Bill Perillo, Bill O'Brien, and Laura Dantcho.
Do I have a second for that? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to amend item 7.2.1.6 to remove Greg Khan from the list and replace him with Counselor Schake.
Do I have a second to that amendment? Seconded by David Harden. Any discussion on the amendment with switching out Counselor Khan for Schake? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero, and we've called a vote for the original motion as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 7.2.2, EMS Funding. Chairman of the committee, thank you. Chairman of the committee shall be Counselor Poison. Item 7.2.2, EMS Funding. Mr. Harden.
I'd like to make a motion that hereby establish the EMS Funding Committee with me being the chairperson, Councilman Dave Harden, Bill Perillo, and hereby appointed to the EMS Funding Committee.
Do I hear a second on that? Seconded by Mr. Perillo. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Parks and Rec, item, excuse me, 7.2.3, Parks and Rec Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that the foregoing appointments to the Parks and Recreation Committee be and are hereby approved. Council members, Ken Poison and myself, Bill O'Brien, Paul Taveras to the expired term of Walid Kadeem, Drew Bonnington to his expired term, Paul Hoydic to his expired term, Gary Bauer to his expired term, Rick Marcone to his expired term, Robert Jakel to the expired term of Robert Jakel, and Sean Kennedy to the expired term of Sean Kennedy.
Do I have a second?
Also...
Sec.
Oh, you want to do the, we'll do the alternate separate?
Alternatives is a separate agenda item. So I need a second on that. I had Mr. Harden over here as a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Mr. O'Brien, 7.2.4.
Yes, that the foregoing alternate appointments to the Parks and Recreation Committee be and are hereby approved. Catherine Proto of Emerald Drive to the expired seat of Syracuse Calzone, Prez Palmer of Curtis Place to the expired seat of Walter Stelmack.
Do I have a second on that? Seconded by Dave Harden. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 7.2.5, Tax Partnership Screening Committee. This is three council members appointed by the council chair per the charter. I appoint Laura, Councilwoman Laura Dantcho, Councilman Bill Perillo, and myself, Chris Pia. Item 7.2.6, WPCA. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dantcho.
I move that the following, that the Water Pollution Control Authority be established, and that the following counselors participate. Counselor Pia, Counselor Schake, Counselor Taveras, Harden, Khan, Poison, Perillo, Connor, O'Brien, and myself be and are hereby appointed to serve on the Water Pollution Control.
Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Taveras. Thank you, sir. Any, any discussion? Well, again, all counselors sit on WPCA. Hearing none. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Item 7.2...
We need a chairperson. No?
No, I don't believe so, Mr. Town Attorney. I believe it's voted on by the WPCA's own board. Yeah, thank you.
That's correct. That's correct.
I just, item 7.2.7, the Pension Board. Do I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Perillo?
Yes, I'd make a motion to establish a Pension Board with council persons Shake, Taveras, Harden, Khan, Connor, O'Brien, Dantcho.
Motion on the table, do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Dantcho, any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes nine zero. Item 7.2.8 for the Planning Commission, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that Deborah Lamberty be and is hereby appointed an alternate member of the Planning Commission for the expired term of John Stermer, with the term expiring January 2023.
Do I have a second on Miss Lamberty?
I'll second.
I have a second for Ms. Dantcho, any discussion on this? Hearing none, call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes nine zero. Item 7.2.9, Zoning Board of Appeals, District Two, do I have a motion on this? Mr. Harden.
Zoning, Zoning Board of Appeals, I would like to nominate Lorenzo Elder for that spot, which he'll be replacing Paul Taveras, who is now a councilman.
Motion, do I have a second on that? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien, any discussion on that? Nope. Mr. Harden?
I would, I definitely would like to support Lorenzo Elder tonight in this position. You know, he's been very active in the community, not only him, but his wife also, showing up to meetings and really voicing his concerns and working with the South End to do what is fair, right, and just. So I'd like to thank everyone for supporting him in this, this journey, being on this board. So, again, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add about Lorenzo, I first met him about two years ago, when he volunteered to coach a soccer team, not knowing anything about soccer. And by the end of the season, he loved the sport, and his wife told me he cried the last day because the season was over. And he's come back to coach again and again, and I've had a lot of discussions with him, he's all about positivity, and I love that about him.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. We'll call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any, any a's? Okay, Chair, vote nine zero. Item 7.2.1.10, excuse me, Zoning Board of Appeals, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dantcho.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dave DeCilio to, as an alternate member of the Zoning of Board of Appeals for the resigned term of Len Petraselli, with the term expiring January 2021.
I'll, do I have a second on that? Seconded by Mr. Taveras, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
I had the privilege of working with Dave for three years, Class A fellow, so, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Taveras. Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes nine zero. Item 7.2.11, Zoning, Zoning Commission, alternate three-year term.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rich Fedet to the alternate for the Zoning Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Taveras, I'll recognize you first.
Yeah, I wish I could nominate Steve Reguskas.
Okay, so we have another name as a nomination? Do I have a second to that nomination?
I'll second.